Any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Motion to agenda be approved?
Second.
I'm in favor.
Alright.
Bring us citizens wishing to speak. Anybody that would like to come in on any topic? If not, we will move to discussion and depositation on impact fees. So, if you would just come to the podium and give your name, please.
Good morning, I'm Bill Ross, Ross Associates. Uh, did everybody get a, something in your package? The uh, you got the pretty color version?
Yeah.
Um, as you know, the uh, county has uh, initiated a study of potentially adopting impact fees. You're not required to adopt impact fees, and there's a lot involved in the study to bring to you all of the uh, information, uh, what those fees could be, uh, how high they could be. You will set ultimately the fees to be charged. I'll tell you the maximum, you can charge that or less. That's, that's the key to find what all I do. Think of, the uh, first page is of, who are we? Who is Ross Associates? Uh, we do long-range conferences planning, we do zoning and development codes, and under implementation and financing, we do impact fees. The next page just gives you an idea, we have done uh, the vast majority of impact fee programs uh, in the state. I'm gonna take off my jacket, if that's alright.
Sure.
I walked over here too fast.
I agree.
The uh, why does uh, cities and counties actually want to adopt impact fees? The idea is that, uh, as new growth occurs, um, you need more stuff, you need more fire uh, trucks, you need more uh, sheriff's patrol office uh, uh, cars and whatnot. Without impact fees, the people, the taxpayers who are here now pay the majority of the cost of those improvements. To the extent that you need more fire trucks because of, of future growth, that means that the existing taxpayers are paying for uh, paying the bill, if you will, uh, for new development to occur. Impact fees shift that to the new developments so that they pay their fair share of the cost of that new fire truck. Uh, it may be a hundred percent, it may be something smaller. But uh, but that's the idea, it's, it could be looked at as a tax reduction approach. And you're not actually reducing your taxes, but you're reducing the need to increase those taxes in the future to cover these expenditures. Um, next page is about the advisory committee. You will be required to appoint an advisory committee. Uh, this is in the impact fee law, the state law. And um, the uh, uh, the advisory committee uh, must have at least, well, no more than, excuse me, no more than ten members, but at least five. And of them, of the members that you appoint, at least half of them need to be from the building, construction, and planning fields. Uh, in other words, home builders, uh, in particular subdivisions, uh, they need to be represented on this, on this committee, and fifty percent of them have to, have to come from that. You can, you, it could be a hundred percent. It could be any percentage you want, as long as at least half of them uh, are involved in the land development and construction of business. Uh, the others could be planning commission members, people you know, people who are interested. Um, it's up to, up to you who the uh, I'm gonna call them the citizen representatives, uh, uh, whoever you want to uh, to adopt. But uh, no more than ten people uh, in total. So, next page, what is the, the, the state law really cover? Talks about the public facilities categories that you can charge impact fees for. There's a limited, there's a limited list. Uh, talks about development exactions, what a great word. Exactions. That's in the law, it's not bill laws. Um, talks about certain system improvements, service areas, exemptions. There are ways to exempt, exempt certain kinds of development from impact fees. And there's a comprehensive plan connection. Uh, because the, ultimately, the uh, impact fees become part of your comprehensive plan by virtue of what's called the capital improvements element. And I'll get to that in a minute. Next page, development exactions. Uh, this is the same, this is the same thing I was just, just talking about. Uh, any requirement for uh, new development to pay money, contribute goods, services, land, uh, is a condition of approval. Uh, generally, you see the condition of approval as part of, uh, for instance, a rezoning uh, case, rezoning case with conditions attached. So, the, excuse me, um, it also defines development approval, which is a long list, it's virtually anything that uh, advances a development project that's uh, uh, is authorized by the, by the county. Uh, and in, most importantly, uh, building permits. And, and the reason I say that's most importantly is because generally, you will be collecting the impact fees as building permits are issued. Right now, you have a building permit fee uh, that covers uh, administration or whatnot. Uh, to that, you can add uh, the impact fees. So that folks pay the impact fee upfront. It gets more complicated than that, they can delay. Uh, there may be some question of what, what's the guy building? He's building a, a shell, a shell commercial building, he doesn't know what's gonna go in it. So, uh, you can defer the, the uh, impact fee until he knows who's gonna go in that building, because the fees are different for different kinds of land uses. Um, excuse me, uh, this just, next sheet just uh, uh, repeats what I said. Um, you can only impose these so-called exactions by way of development impact fees. Um, if uh, if somebody wants a rezoning, and you say, well, you're good, you're rezoning a big subdivision, those people are gonna need someplace to go recreate, so we want you to give us that two-acre piece of property over there for a park. Can't do that, that's an exaction. Because you're going to be charging impact fees to buy that two-acre park. And that, so you see that shift. Uh, so it's really the home buyers or the home builders, as they get building permits, they're gonna pay their impact fee, and you'll get the money from the two, the two acres uh, through impact fees. Um, and the law specifies which public facilities uh, you can charge impact fees for, and it's quite a long list. Uh, and on the next page, um, it highlighted, I've put in here, the uh, the public facilities that uh, I'll be studying for impact fees. Roads, excuse me, uh, parks, open space, public safety, which includes uh, E nine-one-one and police protection, excuse me, fire protection, EMS, and animal control. That's what we're studying in this uh, in this uh, impacty project. So, uh, again, this, the next page, again, differentiates uh, project improvements from system improvements. Uh, project improvements, uh, somebody's gonna build a subdivision, a road in that subdivision, there's a project improvement, it serves that subdivision. Uh, system improvements would be, if there's a, let's say there's a school down the road, and you want the developer to build a sidewalk from his subdivision to that school, that's a system improvement, it's not just his development. Other people can walk on that sidewalk. So those system improvements fall into the impact fee program. Whereas everything else they do, the streets, the curbs, the gutters, the sidewalks inside there, they may even put a park in their own uh, subdivision, or a community house, or whatever it might be. Those are all up to the developer to put in through his own design. You may require some of that through the, through the zoning process, but those are project improvements. So impact fees can't be uh, used to uh, to pay for uh, uh, improvements that the developer is responsible to put in their area. Uh, now little, by little, drawing with the circles uh, emphasizes what we're talking about here uh, with regard to exactions. Way over here on the left, project improvements, uh, subdivision street, deceleration lane for a shopping center, uh, those relate to the project itself. Then there are system improvements, like land for a school, I wanna build a new county courthouse, get some land for a library, or uh, recreation uh, facilities, you know, a public park, swimming pool, whatever it might be. But of all of these kinds of uh, improvements, only in this particular case, only the land for the library and the recreation facilities are actually impact fee eligible. That's part of our study, is to differentiate what is uh, impact fee eligible, and ultimately, of course, how much could you, could you charge? Um, the uh, the next one kind of emphasizes that same thing. Project improvements are site-in-site facilities. Uh, system improvements are public facilities that design, that are provided, um, provide service to the larger community. Maybe including yourself in that subdivision we're talking about, but also other people in the, of the community. You build a new library, that's yours, more than some subdivision. Um, and very important element in, in the definition of a capital improvement. This comes out of, again, out of the state law. Uh, it's an improvement with a useful life ten years or more. So, uh, if the, if the fire chief wants a new axe, that axe is probably not gonna be impact fee eligible. It doesn't necessarily have a life of these ten years, unless you never let him replace this, is a, is a, axes, whatnot. But it's things like uh, like buying land, uh, building buildings, uh, a new senior center, something like that, a public facility, um, a new fire truck I mentioned. Um, and uh, one suggestion I always make with regarding fire trucks, buy the fire truck fully dressed out, ladders, axes, air packs, whatever. Too many, too many, a lot of folks, they'll buy the truck, and then they'll buy all the pieces and put it on the truck. If you order and buy the whole fire truck with all that stuff on it, the whole cost of that fire truck is impact fee eligible. If you do it piece-me, the truck isn't impact fee eligible, with the air packs, the axes, et cetera, or not. So, that just is a shift in the way you order it. And, and you may order them and take them dressed out anywhere. Um, so level of service is a, is a key concept of this whole thing. Because we, we determine what the level of service is, and what the level of service you desire may be. By and large, we go with the current level of service, and to say, as new development occurs, we wanna maintain that level of service in the future. But the level, level of service today is one fire truck per five hundred houses, then the level of service is one fire truck per five hundred houses. As you get five hundred more houses, you need another fire truck. That second fire truck is impact fee eligible, because it's related to new growth and, and development. Um, the uh, uh, parks, park acreage, uh, what have you got now, how many more acres of, of parks are you gonna need in the future uh, as uh, new development continues to occur? And um, the law also requires that the, to be eligible for impact fees, you have to have a comprehensive plan. Well, everybody's got comprehensive plans since this. Um, but containing a capital improvements element. Um, it used to be, but the law could, the law continues to say, comprehensive plan containing a capital improvements element is required to be eligible to even charge impact fees. These days, DCA does not require capital improvements elements in comprehensive plans. Um, unless you've got impact fees uh, already. But uh, uh, many cities and counties that don't have impact fees yet, they don't have a capital improvements element, a CIE, in your comprehensive plan. But it's spelled out, and DCA is having a lot of trouble with this whole requirement, because this is in the law, but in their regulations, they say you don't have to have a capital improvements element in your comprehensive plan. So, it's best to go with the law, because the law requires more than what DCA requires. So you're saving if you comply with the impact fee law. Which is what we do in this study. We will produce a capital improvements element uh, as part of the, part of the study.
Can, can I ask you, interrupt, answer your question?
Sure.
This, first. We actually do have a capital improvement, but as of right now, because the water and sewer authority has impact fees, not only the county, but that authority.
Yeah.
So we have to have it, uh, we have to have it here. So, my question is, since we have that, for them, I don't necessarily have this. But we do have capital improvement, and we're getting ready to review it, uh, in another month or two.
Yeah.
Are there changes that we need to make with, with that plan, uh, to incorporate us? Or are we good with it, just because we have them, the, the impact fees already?
Well, you're wading into sticky territory, because these days, DCA says water and sewer authorities don't have to have capital improvements plans. Um, and they, they, they wiggle on this, and they finally said, well, okay, the law says they do, but we don't wanna see it. So, and when I said, well, how about impact fees for other things in water and sewer? They said, oh no, it's not required anymore, except the law requires it. So I'm gonna give you one, whether DCA wants it or not. And for an impact fee, they do review the CIEs uh, that are prepared as part of, of an impact fee program. So, uh, we'll be okay, but uh, but uh, they, they, right, right now, as we speak, DCA does not require a capital improvements element, other than water and sewer. Uh, for any, you know, any comprehensive plan that you may be preparing or have, they don't wanna see it. So, I'm gonna give you one, and we will send it to DCA, and they will review it. So, but it's uh, it's really dicey between what the law says and what their regulations uh, now say, so. Uh, if you don't have impact fees, you do not have to submit any kind of uh, uh, capital improvements element to DCA for anything. Well, water and sewer, which does require it, so. Um, it's a mess, right? But we uh, we will navigate through this mess and make sure you're totally covered in legal and everything else in that process.
Good.
The uh, DCA also has some minimum standards for preparation of comprehensive plans. Uh, they require annual updates. Once you adopt a, an impact fee program, you'll have to file an annual update, obviously every year. The update is, what'd you collect? How much interest did you make on it? What'd you spend? Uh, they'd like to see what you spent it on, but uh, it's basically a financial uh, recap. Uh, and so, uh, the uh, we try to schedule these annual updates based on when you actually get your uh, county uh, assessment uh, each year. What am I trying to say, it's not your assessment? Somebody does a report on how much money you've got, what'd you do with it, et cetera.
Is that it?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, it's good to have to base that annual update on the latest audit. Sometimes it doesn't work out.
Right.
Uh, it's just based on the last audit you've got. Um, but, that'll, that'll, that'll come after you get into the impact fee business, but we will set that up for you uh, in our study. Um, there's a little diagram that kind of summarizes uh, what we're doing. The first thing is a methodology report. So far, you've gotten a partial uh, topic. And I'll get to that in a minute, but uh, the first whole study will be the cap, the methodology report, and that's gonna include all the uh, uh, capital projects that would be needed and the cost uh, of those, of those projects to be ready and serve future development. Um, and generally, we base that on what you've got now. You're gonna need more of it, but uh, it may be that you need more, more than what you got. So we will work all that out with you uh, in terms of uh, uh, determining how many more fire trucks you're gonna need within the next twenty years or so, usually shoot for twenty years. From this report is pulled what's called a capital improvements element, the CIE. Uh, basically, DCA wants to see everything that's in the methodology report, except they don't care what the fee calculations. So those come out. There are a couple of other things that go in uh, the CIE. Uh, and that, uh, you'll have a public hearing to, to send that off to DCA. Uh, but they're reviewing, they do their usual sixty-day uh, uh, review. Of course, it goes through the regional commission, onto DCA. During that sixty-day process, uh, while it's under review, we'll be uh, uh, working on the impact fee ordinance itself. Um, the fee schedule, in other words, how much do you really wanna charge? Hundred percent, twenty percent, whatever you want. We'll work that out with you um, in the process of creating the impact fee ordinance. Uh, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes in the ordinance, comes out of the state law to be in there, plus fee schedule you wish to actually charge. You'll have to have two public hearings on that ordinance before you can adopt it. Um, and also during that period, we'll be working with staff, putting in place whatever procedures uh, will be necessary to add the impact fee collections. Uh, and with the finance folks, uh, where do you put the money? It's gotta be in its own bank account. Uh, and uh, we'll be working with that. Uh, we will prepare handbooks for, for, for staff, for procedures and whatnot. As you have turnover, as you get a new person on board, the handbook will be there for them already, so it'll pass the time. So hopefully, these two things come together, we get the approval from our DCA, and you will have had your two public hearings on the ordinance. You can at that point adopt the CIE and adopt the ordinance with the fee schedule uh, in it. Now this whole thing takes about, generally takes about nine months to get through this whole thing, but we, we move along as quickly as we possibly can anyway. 回到 a, a, a study schedule. Uh, the last one is kind of a recap of what I was just saying. The methodology report, when this, when this report is actually done, um, uh, it'll have, it, it already has forecasts of uh, uh, population growth, uh, employment growth, housing unit growth that's projected for the next twenty years uh, in the county. Uh, it includes uh, the projects uh, that you wanna charge impact fees for. Uh, fire trucks, sheriff vehicles, whatever, whatever they are, will be uh, specified in that report. And it calculates the maximum impact fees. I don't know what you wanna adopt, but I can tell you what's the ceiling. And that's what will be in that report. From that, we pull out things for the capital improvements element. Um, and then basically, the new thing in that is a community work program. Uh, you're doing those now with the comprehensive plans. Uh, it's a five-year uh, plan, well, again, DCA's playing games with all of this stuff. It's supposed to be a five-year plan of what are you actually gonna do with regard to impact fee projects? Uh, when are you gonna buy that fire truck? When are you gonna build that uh, uh, sheriff's uh, facility? Whatever's in the, the program, this will be the first five years, year by year, uh, what you intend to do. Uh, and uh, then it goes off through the regional review and DCA review, that's that sixty days. During that time, we'll be working with you on the ordinance and the public hearings uh, that are necessary before you can adopt the ordinance, and especially for the fees you really want to adopt, as opposed to those maximums in the methodology report. And again, if everything works out properly, you'll be ready to adopt the ordinance with the fee schedule and the DCA includes CIE at the same meeting. Uh, then I mentioned, the ordinance requires two public hearings. Okay. So that's overall what we, what we have. Um, and the last page is a, uh, just a, a bar chart kind of, kind of thing. Uh, you see I've already built in the advisory committee getting appointed and uh, and some meetings. Just then, little red, red dots are the uh, 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 are, are commission meetings. And the blue squares are advisory committee meetings. And um, as I said, the, you don't have to adopt or appoint the, the uh, committee until you're ready to adopt the ordinance. That's the only requirement in the law, is they have to be there to advise you before you adopt the ordinance. We like to have the advisory committee earlier, so that we can bring them along, so that they know what's going on, uh, how this impact fee program is put together. So that when you do get to the point that uh, you're looking at what to charge, they already understand and know what those maximum fees are based on, and whatever advice they wish to give you, it's advice, it's not binding in any way. What's binding is that you have a committee that, that meets the DCA uh, requirements of the ten members. So uh, at the end of the, of the process, uh, you can see that it, it moves along. Uh, we, we draft the ordinance for the uh, uh, county attorney to review. Uh, advisory committee gets a look at it, and of course, they're especially expected to have comments on what they, they, the fees should be. Uh, advisory committee gets a look at it and of course, especially expected to have comments on what they, they, the fees should be. This methodology report says the maximum. Um, and, um, the, uh, once the, uh, county attorney has reviewed it and made whatever changes are, are, are necessary, uh, you have to have two public hearings, at least two weeks prior on the ordinance. And, uh, those, uh, get scheduled in here. Meanwhile, I'm working with staff to be sure that the procedures are going to be in place. The manual is, is written to tell them what to do, how, if somebody wants to appeal, what's the appeal process and that sort of, that sort of thing. So then hopefully this all comes together at, at the end. Uh, overall, the whole, the whole process takes about a year to get through, uh, all of this. Now, we're already, uh, up and running anyway, so we, we're not at, uh, just squared over one there. But, uh, but it will take, uh, time. I don't drag my feet out to be sure that it takes those. Uh, I will be working as, as hard, as quickly as I possibly can and not, I'm not going to be tied or restricted by this schedule. You may see things from me much earlier than what it is on the schedule. So this is kind of a, a, uh, no layer thing, uh, schedules again to, to get all of this done. So, um, that in a very large nutshell, uh, is where we are right now. Um, the, the, uh, partial report has the projections in it. Uh, uh, population projections, households, uh, uh, the future, future growth for the coming twenty years. Take a look at those. Be sure that I'm not overstressing or under stressing, uh, what, uh, what we think would really, would really occur. Basically, this report at this point says for the past twenty years you've been growing like this, you're going to keep growing like that into the future. And there may be things that you're aware of and I'm not about. No, wait a minute. You're about to have this gigantic, uh, development soon that will bring along new employees, whatever. Uh, that you may know about that's coming up. I just don't know about it. So these are up for discussion and revision. Um, the population projections are based on annual census es- estimates. Now they do their estimate each year, uh, July the first, which I think is probably the right time to be looking at the population of the county. Cause summertime, I think you probably have more people actually in the county than the middle of winter. So I think that the population stuff is based on kind of like maximum or, uh, highest reasonable, uh, amounts as opposed to how many people are here in January, that sort of thing. But, um, when you, when you get a chance, if you can't sleep some night, take a look at this report, see, uh, see my projections, see how many future people, I say I'm expecting to come here in the, uh, in the next twenty years, uh, uh, households, uh, business, employment. Uh, their employment figures in here, we use, uh, uh, Woods and Pool, uh, as a, uh, input on that. They're a nationally recognized firm and they, they do, uh, employment forecasts, excuse me, down to the county level. So, uh, we, uh, I'm using their numbers in here. Take a look, you may know that something's going to happen that Woods and Pool don't know about. And, uh, so those numbers may need, need to fill up. Otherwise, uh, these may be perfectly, uh, perfectly fine. What more can I tell you?
What's the next step?
The next step is for, uh, uh, I need to collect information from the departments. How many fire trucks have you got? How many, uh, sheriff vehicles have you got? Um, how many acres of parks and recreation have you got? So I will send that request back. I may have already sent it to Clark. Uh, but you've gotten something from me on, in terms of those date, that date?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, yeah.
But that's not saying, because we kind of go on back and forth for a few months.
Well, I'll go, I'll go back in my files and see what I do. Well, I'm going to send it to you again whether you got it or not. But, uh, but it specifies, uh, for each of the, uh, department, what kind of information I need. It's basically lowland stock, uh, land, buildings. It's, it's, uh, capital improvements that have a life of at least ten years. And if they're not sure about the ten years, put it in there. We'll figure it out. Better to get more than we need in this.
Well, that's where we, that's where we are. We're trying to keep going.
Okay. I have a few comments.
Yes.
And thank you. You answered the questions that I was getting along the way. You answered in your presentation, so I appreciate it. It was one that was about zoning and requiring green space already in our zoning, but you answered that. If it's in there already, then it's there.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you've already approved the zoning that required green space in the development, fine, because you didn't have impact.
Right, right.
But in the future, now you, it, you know, you can require a big subdivision to have a, a community center, parks, recreation facilities to serve that development. Uh, you can still require that, but if, uh, but you can't say, but, but Mr. Developer, you're going to have so many people here. Three miles down the road, we want to buy five acres for a park. Cause that park's going to serve more than just, just that development. But anything you require that is intended to only serve that developer. Now, you know, somebody lives there, they have friends over for a picnic and use the, the playground. That's okay.
So if we're charging impact fees for a new development that does require that green space in our already established zoning, do we have to change that or no? You're saying no? Okay, just clarify.
Yeah, I think you just go whatever the zoning airs and continue with it. But they're still going to have to pay that impact fee for parks and recreation. Now, your ordinance will have an appeals process. So that developer could come to you on an appeal and say, I don't think I should have to pay the recreation impact fee because I'm putting a five acre park in a, in a, in a swimming pool and all that in my development. And you can say, well, okay, you don't have to pay it or let's go fifty fifty. I mean, it's up to you to decide the extent to which that development will still use, uh, uh, public facilities. And quite often, they do. But that's, that would be part of the discussion. Because you, you're looking at, do we, do we, do we reduce the impact fee for parks and recreation at all? If we do want to reduce it because of those facilities, how much should we reduce it? And that's going to be more negotiation and, uh, calculation and math, math side of it. What is it though? Pushing as far as they'll go and take those step back?
But once we've set these fees, they're set.
I was planning director in Fulton County for ten years.
Oh, Lord.
And in, and in Gwinnett County for two years. So I'm real used to developers.
Yeah, right. Um, I, I appreciate this methodology report. It was very, I have read it and it was very, um, thorough. Um, is this, this is a partial draft? So this is not a complete.
I'm going to add to it.
Okay.
So what's in here? Unless you, you have some comments or you say there's no way we're going to grow that fast or, or you didn't put enough in here. You know, I, I want to hear those comments, but otherwise this will then have chapters, you know, each public facility category, fire, sheriff, et cetera, will have, each have their own chapter. And, um, those chapters will basically say, what do you got right now? And what more do you think you need? And we will look at future population and employment growth and say, well, wait a minute. You know, in twenty years, over twenty years of that period, you're going to need all this other stuff. And, and they usually just nod their head that way. But it'll be spaced out, you know, you know, you, you need a new fire truck three years from now, uh, or whatever. But, but there, the facilities that are required only to serve new growth. Um, replacements don't qualify. If you got an old fire truck and you want to replace it, you haven't increased the fleet. You still got the same number of fire trucks, just one of us new. It's not impact the eligible because you haven't increased the fleet. Uh, that's why I tell people, don't, don't trash your fire trucks. Put them in reserve. Because reserve fire trucks are perfectly, I got all kinds of ways to.
So, and I think I read in here that you can go back retroactively. Did I read that or did I misread that? And cover some things that were, that we bought due to, um, the need to increase our fleet.
Um, that'll just be part of my study to say, you tell me what they are. Because if you just bought a brand new fire truck yesterday or last year, well, obviously that fire truck's going to serve future population for many years, so.
We did just buy a ladder truck, like yesterday. We did just buy a ladder truck.
Oh, okay. We haven't received.
Yeah, right. And we haven't even received it.
That's okay. You don't have impact fees yet either. But no, yes, we can, we can, um, uh, uh, in essence, carry that, that truck forward, uh, because it's a new purchase. Uh, but basically it just becomes part of the fleet. It means you, it, it means that you're going to need slightly more fire trucks in the future because you got this, you've added to the fleet that's already there. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at it and I don't want to say play with it, but we will consider every option.
And I'm sure when you ask them about that, they'll let you know of that. But we did buy it because of growth, for sure.
Sure.
Um, and we have not received it yet. Oh, sorry.
Well, if I understand this, uh, uh, that's going to serve the entire county, uh, including those who are here now. So I guess my question on that would be, it was purchased partially for growth and partially for what's already there. So I'm assuming then that we could, uh, uh, we could designate some portion of that, the cost of that truck that would serve new growth as opposed to what's there now. And we, and it may not be full, fully eligible for impact fees, but partially eligible for debit receivable.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. You know, I'll, um, uh, I'll be sending a, a request for information, uh, through Clark. And remember to put that in there.
Sure they will. From looking at them. Um, my, my next question or comment was the Woods and Pool is dramatically different than the census estimates.
Well, Woods and Pool is, is, uh, nationally recognized with regard to deployment type of, of projects. Uh, they're lousy on population.
Okay.
So I go with the census. Uh, uh, again, they're estimates, but they, but they give them to me every year. So over a ten-year period, I've got ten years of data that I can then project forward. Woods and Pool is just one time. And I've ever, I've even tried looking at, I mean, I've got every wood. They issue a new one every year. Uh, I've got, uh, I've got these reports that go way back. They fluctuate by precedence, so I don't know how they.
I kind of liked their predictions. I liked their predictions better than the census, but not that I, I was just because it was lower.
Uh huh.
Um, that's, I didn't know if you averaged those out or took those into consideration or since in the report.
I look at them because I have the report, but, uh, I can, uh, to use the census stuff because they're more, um, reliable, if you will. Uh, quite often in, in the report, I will have a, a chart comparing, uh, the, excuse me, uh, the, uh, forecast that I prepared to Woods and Pool and the state, uh, office of planning and budget, and compare all three of those to see how they're, sometimes Woods and Pool is dead on. Uh, I've got them in Pike County. Woods and Pool basically said that Pike County didn't have any more growth at all. Well, that's silly. So I'm not using Woods and Pool, uh, for population. But, um, I take their employment projections and I revise them to my population projections. Uh, because there's a relationship here. Well, people you got, the more stuff, the more restaurants you need, the more hardware stores you need, et cetera. So it's, it's, um, it's a case by case basis on a city or in county, by city and county basis to look at these forecasts and which ones make sense, which ones are created. Um, there's, uh, working with one very high-growth county. Woods and Pool projects almost no employment growth over the next twenty years. Uh, that, that's, it might sound right. So, um, I try to look at everything to figure out what, what makes sense.
In terms of the population though, um, the, the census gives you the yearly estimates, estimates actually, they do, they're just a technical thing. But if I read this thing correctly, um, at the ten-year mark, when they do the big census, they actually then go back and, and sort of, uh, adjust it.
And they do that the next year. They go back and they readjust the previous ten years.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So in the end it goes very accurate.
I use their revisions. Uh, and in some cases it's a notable, uh, change, particularly high-growth, uh, areas. Um, they don't seem to keep up with that. And I don't know, I don't know why, uh, they get housing data, uh, uh, start. So they know how many housing units are being, being built at least. Um, I, it's.
And I had one more question on it. Because we're such a tourism community and a large percent of our housing, uh, units are short-term rental. How are you putting that into this?
Well.
Because I see some that are like, um, unoccupied or.
That, that's why I use the, uh, I like the census stuff because that's taken in the middle of the summer. And I figure that, uh, that's probably your peak for population. People are here during the summer using their, 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 their temporary houses or they're renting them. Uh, more of them are getting rented in the middle of the winter or something like that. So I'm thinking there's kind of a correlation there with the census estimates. They are estimates, but, um, it is going to be something to project forward.
I appreciate both your question, very good question. It's nice of you, very informed by and about that, retroactively, you know, the last capture costs, the labor expense. It's a lot of sense to that, I'm caring. It looks like then if you're reaching, uh, that to David, uh, David's going to send it to me. I'll, I'll, somebody's reached over to departments and sign them and go get this.
Okay. Oh, and I can't remember. Did, I may not have sent you my standard questionnaire for the departments on their inventories and all that.
I don't recall receiving it. If you recall, we've had an email issue that, uh, so, so we've missed each other during occasions. But I think we'll do, uh, once we establish that communication, we'll send it to me, send it to Charlie and send it to Ed Whitehead. And between the three of us, Ed Whitehead will make sure it's done.
Okay. Okay. And everybody send me your email. My email is a strange, uh, one word, BillRoss, B I L L R O S S dot theolder, one word, T H E O L V E R at gmail dot com. I had a, I had a different email address for years and years and years. And it doesn't work anymore. The host got attacked or whatever, went offline, so gave it, uh, email from the, from the one I've used for twenty years. So that's why. So that's why, that's why me.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll hit that to you right, right away. And send me your emails so that we get copies and everything that I sent you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Very much, Mr. Ross.
We got a little restaurant down on the street here that's open for breakfast and that was the best breakfast. The cornerstone. Yeah, oh. You know, I didn't tell her, I would tell you that, but.
It's great to hear.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to approval of collections between twenty five school tax rates received from the Board of Education. I believe what they have decided now is nine four one two one bills. Make a motion, David, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adopting the twenty twenty five general maintenance operations military for Gilbert County. Uh, currently we're looking at five point eight two nine bills. We make a motion to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go to it, make a motion, just jump in. They're really great. Adopting the twenty twenty five general obligation upon military for Gilbert County. Um, we're looking at point five bills. We make a motion to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody can executive session. No action. Well, one time, uh, legal. Uh, motion to go into, say, property, property as well. Motion to go into executive session, property, um, with no action, access, illegal with no action, just. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.